Counsel, turn on your microphone, please. Have any amendments to the agenda tonight?
Mr. Mayor.
Lander Stocker.
I would propose that we take the two applicants, since they're here. They got put on the end of the agenda just because there was an internal mix-up in the order, and Cory had already copied part of the packet, so she didn't want to renumber it.
Oh, no. We have to stay here, they have to stay here. We can do that. We'll move them up. Anything else on the agenda that you want to address? Okay, well, let's start with the UDs. First on the last. As the council knows, and the other parties invested in this know, we've been having discussions trying to work out a proper solution that's satisfactory to the UDs, to the Mertz-Storfs, and to the city. And so, we're still working on the final details. We're looking at how much land we're talking about. And I talked to the UDs tonight here. And what we'd like to do is, I've been in touch. I got an email from the Mertz-Storfs this morning. They're out of town until Monday. And they would like to meet Monday evening. And what we're really looking for is determining how much land we're talking about and coming up with a suitable price per square foot, which will set the agreed-upon amount that has to transfer. And then, Liz, we need to get together and talk about how that land transfers. Do they transfer it to the city, so that we have the right-of-way there that we need to proceed? And then, we have to look at the wetland mitigation, see how we can come out on Gypsy Valley Road to make it as safe as possible, minimize the land that needs to be purchased, and complete the separation as far as we can from the Mertz-Storfs driveway to the new driveway.
Right.
And then, the understanding we had was there would be a shared driveway. The proposal would be a shared driveway with an agreement, but the 66 feet would be there for any future roads. But right now, the two brothers could share the driveway. So it minimizes their cost going in.
So then, yeah, the question is the wetland mitigation. And, I mean, that would be basically the burden of the city or whoever constructs the road in the future. Okay.
I'm assuming so. Obviously, this way, you know, where the driveway comes out, we'd have it come out as close to that as possible. We'd have to get the, we'd have to iron out those final details.
Right, okay.
But at this point, we would like to have something by Tuesday's meeting. If we don't, the UDs have said they'll work with us. They need to see something before August.
Right.
Is that a fair summation? All right. Is there anything else you need to tell us on that, Liz? You're working with Shane on the DNR on the wetland?
Yeah, Shane's gone this week, too. It's basically just the proper permitting to go through the wetland mitigation process.
I know one of the considerations, too, was to make sure there's proper culverting, that proper culverts underneath the drive to make sure that Pia's land continues to drain, because that affects Pia and Tony across the road. So they want to make sure that that never restricts that drainage ditch going through there, so.
Culvert is already installed, and it isn't working. As you can tell, the last heavy rains we had. Well, yes, I did check, in fact, just Sunday, to make sure that it had washed in and that it was working, and it is working.
And if you ever widen that driveway, I want to make sure that the culvert is sufficient.
Yes.
All right. Anything else? Would you like to say anything?
We're just here if anyone has any questions or if anyone wants any information, we're just here for them.
I will say that, you know, they've been very patient and cooperative in taking proposals, so hopefully, we can wrap things up this next week here. Be nice by Tuesday if we can't, and we'll get it as soon as we can after that. We'll get it all in writing. So everybody's satisfied that they've been heard and reconned, so. All right. Anything for the council? All right. Thank you very much. And Mr. Jim Clemmer. He had a letter that came in addition here.
Mr. Mayor.
Lander Stocker.
Yeah, Mr. Clemmer is just looking for a compromise. He's willing to reduce the size of the building in hopes of keeping part of it where it is. And the letter that he brought this evening is an explanation of just kind of how it ended up where it was. I guess more for the record than anything. But it would be about a 15-foot difference, 14 to 15 feet. He would have to have that put on the survey if the council wants to go that route. But that's my best estimate. Just measuring off the aerial photo on that. If we made it a 40-by-40 structure, we would have an overall setback from the center line, then, of about 83 feet.
And who prepared the options for placement within the required setbacks?
I prepared these graphics, the options for placement. There's multiple scenarios within the setback area. I guess the biggest thing is the tree removal that would need to be done in addition to what has already been done. And, you know, he took so many out for the drain field and for the building where it is. And his hope is to compromise with this 40-by-40.
Let me ask you, the 40-by-40, the reason you had proposed that, Mr. Clemmer, is because you could utilize part of what you've already started?
Yes.
And if you took the 40-by-40 and put it back within the required area, you basically scrapped everything you've done at this point?
Everything would have been done. There are the laminated construction upgrades, you know, the poles. And they're just set on a pad in the footing holes. So we would have to, it's all framed. And if anybody wants to drive past it, it looks, it's ready for steel. And I called Andy out to basically inspect my basement, because we're remodeling our basement, little front and everything. And then, I asked him whether he was there to inspect the framing of the pole building. And that's when he noticed the setback was wrong. His inspector, or someone, this Jeff, came out when they put the, drilled the footing holes. And he got there two hours early, and it wasn't ready for it. And he failed us on the first inspection. And then, a week later, he came back. I put that in that letter, that, and then, he passed. We passed inspection for the footing holes, and he never noticed all the times that my setback was wrong from cell to circle. And so, they worked all winter, basically, framing, framing it. I mean, in the cold and wind, and, I mean, they're climbing around with safety harnesses on and trying to get it completed. And then, when we found out in April that it was, it stopped. And my heart about fell out of my chest, because I was like, oh, my gosh. You know, I basically put it where it is because of the septic. And so, we moved it further, because we have to be 10 feet from the bottom of the septic. And then, I didn't want to put it too close to my neighbor, Bull and Tiffany. They've sent letters, and they're happy with where it is, because their deck is, comes off the side of the house where the one scenario would have been, they would have been looking right at the side of my septic. Or right now, my septic on the pole shed. They'd have been sitting on their deck, and right by that wall would have been my side of my pole building. So there's a little grove of sumac in there and birch trees that would all have to be taken out, all the way back to my property line and behind my little shed. That's illustrated on the drawing also. So I would basically have to take this hole down, salvage whatever lumber and trusses, and then drill all the holes, have it filled. I had our spec septic guy bring in 10, 12 truckloads of fill where it is to build it up, because it was low. And so, they brought that in, leveled everything off on that spot. And then, that's when they framed it. So I wasn't purposely moving it for any per se reason other than to satisfy my neighbor without having to look, you know. I mean, how many people want to go out on your deck and barbecue and be looking right at a mammoth old pole building?
I thought you put a nice mural on there. Put a nice mural on there.
Yeah, I could have. I didn't think of that. Yeah, I could have put trees on it or something.
Ms. Clemmer, let me.
I could plant trees on one side or two, and then, but I didn't want to do that, because they actually had to take a beautiful oak tree down that would have been going right over the top of it. So they cut that down, because it was right on the edge of the bottom of the septic system on the mound, because it's a big, huge mound. So we're adding an extra bedroom and bathroom downstairs. So we had to put an egress window in. Andy's been out several times for inspecting. He, I, I'm the contractor, basically, because the guys doing it aren't licensed or anything. They're just friends. And so, I kind of was the contractor for both the pole building and the basement. We're still not completed with the basement. We do have the bathroom functional. All the framing is done. We just got to get the electrical, I got to get an electrician on to finish, because I got to upgrade my old panel. I got to go to a 200 amp service, because I don't have enough power with my wiring for my new septic and my little shed. I got a 40 amp service and my little shed out there, too, so. And then, I got to move the power.
So right now, we have a proposed building modification from Liz here of the, reducing it to 40-by-40. In your letter, you said you'd rather not even do that.
Well, yeah, I'd rather not, because it's, I mean, I can. It's not, it's just cost-wise, I'm going to have to take that whole end off of 20 feet and then move that end, because it's built for the end, because it's got the door on it. And then, that's going to have to, we're either going to try to lift it with a crane or something and move it 20 feet in, you know, because it's completely solid. He's already said, they did a heck of a chop frame in it. They put a lot of nails in it. A lot more need to, I wish they wouldn't have put so many nails in, because a lot of the lumber is going to not be salvageable. I'm going to have to buy all the lumber. And then, this dentist that built us the septic system is going to bring in sand to, it's going to be just a sand floor. So it's not, but I still have to move the power line. Liz instructed me that I can't, I shouldn't have built it over the power line. I guess I didn't know that. And I have contacted Conexus Energy there. It's 11-something a foot. And I've got like 116 feet. I got to move it around the pole shed, because right now, it's running right through both doors, you know. And we didn't know, they were real careful. We had it marked. But it can't run under the building. It's got to run around it. Or, you know, somewhere around it. I don't know if they splice it or what. But that bay cord would be so much of what to move down. That, I explained that the fill cost to build the new spot. And that's going to take down most of the trees that I have in that corner. And then, I don't have very many left, because I really didn't realize how our lot is, it's nine-and-a-half feet from the back of my garage to the property line. And if you look at the survey, actually, my favorite patio, the corner of it is on, the neighbor to my west, I think, is property. Because we didn't know where the property line was, and I've been maintaining that for years. The boy's got a four-wheeler trail that I reopened for a path to the woods, because he, that used to be a four-wheeler track where the pole shed is. He had, you know, the berms, and so all that was leveled and prepared for the pole shed. Like you see, I just didn't want Bull and Tiffany to have to look at the side of the building. I could have put a girl out again, so I think that's a good idea. I still don't want to have to do something like that, so we don't have to look too much at the. And he's got a pole shed on the cul-de-sac there. That's, God, what is it, like 35?
29 feet.
29 feet. Oh, you measured it?
From the right-of-way line.
Yeah, it gets real close to the cul-de-sac. My hole, and I have the other where I had a four, two cargo shelters. That's one, someone tried to break in through one of them while they were building the pole shed. And the sheriffs, they got the license number of the car. And they talked to them. They said, you're trying to get a piece of black plastic out of the ditch. Well, I have a trail cam pointing right towards my two, because they're not, they're not lockable. And it shows the kid running down to the street and then slowly start walking down the road. And the sheriffs came back to look at the footage. And I'm like, he's clearly in by my, he comes almost out of one room and then runs real quick down the road, and then walks and gets in the car. Get a friend with it. Yeah, and I'll close that driveway off, and we'll put a culvert in by the pole shed. In fact, I've got to put a bigger culvert in over there, because the water puddles right there. And it, when it really rained one year, the public works guys came out. It was following the gas line or a line under the road. It started eroding the road in a line way over towards Rogers Lake on my neighbor Jerry's or Joe's property. Because it's low on that side, lower on their side than mine. And the water was sinking to go to the lake. And it went right down, almost under the road. It almost wore a hole. They had to patch the road. So I put a littler culvert in, and that, and they put a culvert in down in the corner of the cul-de-sac by, on my property, but it's up pretty high. So the water has to get up pretty high. But on my, front of my yard from the ditch, it always puddles real bad. And I know when it's puddling to check my sump in my basement, because if there's water out here, there's usually water in my sump.
Well, it sounds like you've got a lot going on.
Oh, yeah.
Favorite patio is across the line.
Well, that.
The garage is too close.
We had to have a survey at the time. And for the patio, I've been.
For those of you listening on video here, that's why we always have surveys.
Yeah, well, Liz, she said I had enough property, so she didn't recommend doing a survey. But I wish I would have known that, because now, my neighbor could sit on the corner of my patio, because it's his, you know, and enjoy my bonfire, because I've got a nice bonfire pit, and I'm just glad, because.
So stay good friends with your neighbor, because they might be sharing your patio.
Well, I only met him one time. He, his truck was stuck in his driveway. He had like a straight truck. His name was Joe. I'm not sure what his last name.
So we're going to keep moving on here, though. So we've got your request. Obviously, we're down a couple of council members tonight, so. But at this point, you know, the council's already decided that the full building would not be possible. So we'll let, you know, the members that are here talk about an option of the 40-by-40. And then, hopefully, the members that aren't here tonight will watch the video and will have an opportunity to have a decision on Tuesday.
I appreciate it.
Liz, do you want to say anything else for the record here?
No, it's basically just up to you. And again, just, you know, reviewing the variance criteria. I mean, I don't think that it would be too out of place to have the 40-by-40, given the setbacks of two other buildings in the neighborhood. But, you know, there again, he does have the place, the spot, to put it within the setbacks. You know, I waver back and forth on this one. It's a, it is a tough one, you know, because if he had come to us first and said, "Look, I don't want to tear all these trees down. I need, you know, to fill a huge area." You know, would you consider a variance? You know, you may have at that point, but.
Yeah, I think the compromise at that point would have been slightly smaller and in the green location. So you still had enough buffer between the neighbors to the sour circle there. But that would have been a setback. You could have maybe come the front corner over a little bit on the setback line, but it would have been a little more reasonable, I think, then.
Yeah, it's true. He, you know, if we, the way that it's shown at a 40-by-40, like I said, he'd be about 50 feet from the right-of-way. And there's one building that's 29 feet from the right-of-way and another that's 44. So he's still more than a couple of the other buildings in the area. I mean, those have been there, obviously, a lot longer. But it's really up to you in whether you feel that he meets the variance criteria.
1.39 acres, is that the total lot or is that the buildable area?
Yeah, it's a, it's a small lot, so. It is. Yeah, I think it is just over an acre, isn't it, your lot size?
1.39.
Yep, 1.39.
Counsel, have any other questions? We'll let you know on Tuesday.
Appreciate you, Diane.
Do you want, want this copy, Jim, the colored, colored one?
So what's the maximum accessory building size on a 1.39 acre?
He would be at 2,400, I believe I had on the report. Yeah, that's the maximum we allow on that lot size.
Is there other buildings? So is like, what is the rest? If you said that's the biggest you could get?
You mean like the next?
If you did the 40-by-60, that was as big as you could get. That's what you meant.
Right, yep, yes, yep. So it looks like the neighbor, the one neighbor immediately next to him, that building is smaller, probably about a 30-by-25. And then, the other neighbor across the street has a, it's probably a garage size, again, you know, 25-by-25 or 30-by-30. But I don't know if the size has changed since those two went in or not. I guess, you know, the good thing is he's only got one neighbor really adjacent to the building, but the.
I just wanted to be careful setting the precedent.
Right.
You said that, you know, the variance issue becomes, is it of his own doing? In this case, he was working with you guys. He couldn't have been working. And to come back and say, you were doing him a favor by not requiring the survey.
Well, right, and.
And then to come back and throw you under the bus saying, well, if Liz would have required the survey.
Yeah, so I sat down with him, though, and, you know, described everything, where it had to be, how to measure it.
And originally, that was agreed upon?
Yeah, yeah, and it was, exactly. We agreed upon it, and we're in the same room when we put the drawing together. And it really was supposed to be right where that septic is. And, you know, obviously, at the center of the lot, where you wouldn't have been close to the property lines. If somebody wants to go right up 20 feet, up to that 20-foot setback, then, you know, I always tell them, you got to mark the line or show me where your corner irons are. So in this case, yeah, I had, you know, explained it all. But he, yeah, he just wasn't thinking when he was moving it over that he should have asked again, and did not. Didn't contact us.
All right, let's go to the code enforcement, so if you have anything to discuss there. Amazing chance to have a sale. You were going to go out in June here. You been out?
No, I haven't visited there yet.
Haven't seen how good their sale was, but they.
I'll take some photos probably next week. Called Mr. Ortel, no return call. The difficult one, I guess, Dan Larson on Jasper. He did come in and pay the citation that was issued previously. But he's made no progress in the last month, so I feel like I need to issue another one.
All right. What about the Larson William?
Well, you know, he had made a lot of progress last year. But it's still, you know, it's, there's still stuff there. It's not, if it's a vacant parcel, you know, it's not supposed to be a storage yard. And he still had vehicles and, so it kind of waivers. He'll clean it up, and then it'll go back to.
Is there still a trailer there?
No, nobody's living there, and there's not an RV. There were other work-type machines that were there, sitting there. And then, just miscellaneous, you know, a couple cars and just junk. But, I mean, from where he started, he's made a ton of progress. So I don't know, you know, Kathy lives out of town. And he's a shared owner, but they're not really amicable, so it's. They had verbally agreed to sell it and split that. And of course, that hasn't happened, so. She's frustrated, but I can't do anything about that, of course. So.
All right, well, keep working on it. Tom Bettinger, you got a new administrative notice?
Yeah, I just sent written reminders to several people.
New on the Rusteds?
Nothing new there. Oh, I should have sent a reminder today also on 199th. I'll do that.
Johnson, so Westrom applied for the building permit?
He did finally do that. So it's just for the lean-to and the gazebo and deck. I think he's working on getting the right plans right now for Andy to look at. Um, Bettinger's old place on Cleary Road, the Zohorsky place, I did speak with him and that was a good conversation. His tenants are moving out. He's fixing up the place. He's not sure if he's gonna sell it or re-rent it at this point. Uh, but all the cars and the, you know, outdoor storage issue, I think, pretty much went with the tenants. So I'm hoping that that'll be a done deal here pretty quick.
All right.
Um, touched base with Mr. Manson and he had tried to get into the wetland area and his hoe got stuck, so he's gotta wait till it dries out. And yesterday didn't help any, so it doesn't sound like the deal for him to sell is gonna go through or split because I don't think the timeline's fast enough for the people that wanna run the business and apply for the IEP, so. And he misunderstood the fact that you had to live there to operate the business. Um, we had a complaint on Ms. Keacher on one eighty-ninth lane. I guess in talking to her, I felt like it was just sort of a, not a repeat incident necessarily, but uh, she had had her driveway done and had a family get together. So everybody was on the road versus having, you know, as she usually has some people down in by the barn. Um, haven't heard anything in the last couple of weeks, so.
See, common sense says if you're having challenges with neighbors, be proactive.
Right. Yeah, I mean...
People know what's going on, so.
Yeah, exactly. But yeah, one side of the street would be, uh, obviously the preference out there.
Yeah, especially back in that corner. Anderson's cleanup was begun. Has anything been happening lately?
Well, yeah, you go by and you wonder, but, um, still a lot of vehicles. I haven't been back since, you know, for probably three weeks, four weeks. Just kinda... I'll stop again before next meeting.
Next one is in the catch twenty-two. Health conditions probably are exacerbated by...
Right. Yeah, I don't know, the way, I've never met Ms. Carlson, but the way she describes it, she has a tough time getting around. I guess, you know, that is more interior issues, so not as crucial from, you know, a neighbor's standpoint, but, um, just wanna be sure there's, you know, no other animals or people in there.
Yep. Very light. You're gonna check back in two to three weeks, so he'll be checking here shortly?
Yeah, that, uh, I guess the biggest issue to me is the storage container and all the building materials that are at the top of the property near the street. You know, like I told him, I said, I looked back on the aerial photos and that's been there at least a year and a half. So probably closer to two. I said, if you could, you know, if you could make progress and show me that you're actually gonna get a building permit soon, you know, we might be able to work with you, but I said... And then, you know, he kinda hemmed it hot and I, it, I guess, doesn't sound promising, so. Uh, anyway, so I guess he'll have to move it and find somewhere else until he gets closer to a survey and building permit and everything, so.
Excellent, two hundred and twenty-fifth.
Sorry, what was that?
Two hundred and twenty-fifth.
Oh, two hundred and twenty-fifth. Yeah, Mr. Landru did call. Um, he admitted he's residing in the pole shed and he needs to be there to take care of his mother, so I said that Cory was gone this week and that we could possibly meet next week. He wanted to get together, you know, to see what his options were, and I said, well, I don't make these decisions. I said, the ordinance prohibits it, so.
Can he move into the house if he's taking care of somebody?
Yeah. That's about his only other option if he wants to add on to the house or something or just live with her. But if you recall, we have had a couple where we require them to, you know, dismantle parts of it.
Yep.
So stay tuned.
All right. Councilmember Rainbow.
So to Ms. Tackman, so the one on two hundred and twenty-fifth, you talked about dismantling, so has he made it into a living space? Or is he just roughing it in a pole yard?
Eh, I haven't seen it yet.
Okay.
But the complaint was that, yes, there is a kitchen, there's a bathroom. And, you know, we'll see.
How did we get that complaint?
Pardon me?
How did we get that complaint?
It was from a resident by email.
Uh, all right. Anything more on the barn?
No, nothing on the barn yet. Haven't heard.
Anything else in the council's part? All right. Let's go down, let's see. Tree removal, can we jump to that right away since Liz is here? The tree removal, refund of escrow. Quite disappointed, we have water bags on those trees out there. And six of the seven are completely dry. And the seventh one has just a little water in the bottom.
You know, they're empty in like five hours.
Five hours?
The bags are empty in five hours.
The whole point of those is that they trickle in for...
They don't though. That's what they said. They fill them up and they're empty in five hours.
Mm-hmm, they are. It is just like a part of a day thing. I didn't, I thought too, I, I looked online at it too to see what it said. You know, the brand they bought because, because that, that was Joe's understanding, is that they lasted several days, you know, or even a week. But they don't. It's just a day. So then they're out there every day. And they're so busy, you know, they don't, the grass cutting and stuff and without a helper, but although my...
What, I suppose, yeah, you know, you can fill the bags and let them trickle in through the day rather than sit there with a truck all day long, but I've always thought that they, they seep in.
Yeah, it does, but isn't that funny? I mean, 'cause you could probably stand there with the hose and get more water on them than the bag will give, you know? But yeah, I guess the point is you don't have to stand there and it doesn't, you know, you roll...
Well, I take back my disappointment and I'm confused now instead of disappointed.
Yeah.
Be a good heads up though to, again, being proactive on the part of staff to, you know, I'm sure they, they thought that they were trickling in like we thought, so. We just pass that along, Ellen, just to, if you guys hear something like that, shoot an email out to the council just saying, hey, you may have thought like we originally did, like... 'Cause I, I've seen the highway department do that all the time and I just thought they were trickling out over, you know, days, a week.
I know. I don't know if these are smaller or what the deal is or if they're all, all like that.
Yeah, so the question is, you know, Mr. Rodomacher would like the refund of his escrow. There's still obviously missing one tree. The species isn't what we necessarily designated. Anybody in the council have any opinions they'd like to share before Tuesday? And taller trees like that, typically what I've seen is you've got the watering bags and you've got posts on either side to keep them steady while the roots are setting down.
Mr. Mayor?
I don't, I don't know who's... I guess what confuses me, partly as a city, partly in a case like this where if we had purchased the trees and made an arrangement with a contractor to bring them in, we, you know, if we bought them from a local nursery, we would have a certain guarantee on a length of life. You know, they're gonna be good for a year anyway, whatever typically is done. Liz, is that typically what you've seen that?
Yeah, they'll guarantee them for a year, right?
I don't know who's guaranteeing these. You know, they got put in by accident. We didn't pick the species, we didn't pick the location, they got put in by accident. I'm not certain that justifies a full refund. But I would like to know who's guaranteeing the workmanship. I'm not a nursery person. I'm just looking at what I've seen in other locations and typically tall deciduous trees like that are secured while the roots are going down. And there's some maintenance. So I guess my second point is, from a city standpoint, how are we gonna figure out who's supposed to do what, whether it's the flower uh, over here by the memorial, the trimming of the bushes so you can see the memorial sign, the grass, if it's long, it's left on the... Where are the quality standards and who do we talk to about enforcing them? If we're not going to micromanage staff, how do we know somebody's monitoring things like new trees when they came in? So as a council, we can go back to Grant and have that discussion. Your guys got ahead of you, you should talk to them and they should reimburse you. 'Cause they shouldn't have done that. You shouldn't have been charged for that. And then we can negotiate something in the middle. But once they're in, who's responsible? Is this Cory? Ellen, do you want that responsibility? Is it gonna be Joe? I mean, how do we as a council know that those things? I was walking through the park and when we mow the grass, it goes out into the parking lot and goes up against the buildings. Nobody's going back with a leaf blower and cleaning that off, so it looks very unkempt. I don't wanna complain, I don't wanna blame someone, 'cause we just don't know who, who it is we're supposed to be talking to. So as a council, we need to resolve who's supposed to be doing that. Who holds the quality standards, the workmanship standards for the city? Is it something we have to, um, decree from on high here? Or is this something that we, we set a general goal? Here's the quality standards we expect in our streets, in our parks, in our newly planted flowers and trees and whatever. How you do it is up to you. But at some point, the council has to give that direction because it gets very frustrating on our part and we get frustrated and that insults staff. And we gotta quit doing that, but somebody's gotta own this. We shouldn't be worrying about the trees. We shouldn't have to worry about the trees. But it seems like right now, nobody's owning so many of these things. You know, I personally swept the recycling center on recycling day two months ago. And it doesn't look like it's been done since. Are we as a council gonna clearly identify the standards by which the recycling center or the maintenance building or the parks are gonna be held to? And then expect staff to come up with how that's gonna be done? So right now, I'm saying that I don't know, I don't know that there's anybody to blame because we haven't been clear enough, but it's gotta be clear. If you get new trees planted anywhere in city property, somebody in the city has to be accountable for that. In this case, because it was done in a way that Mr. Rodomacher didn't realize what's going on, we didn't realize what's going on, where you got a whole different quandary here. But my concern is we give all this money back and then these trees are dead before the year's out. I have another concern is that as we're looking at those trees, that nice memorial oak we put out there when it became a city is completely dead because it's been completely gouged around and the bark has been girdled. And we're not weed whipping anymore, we're taking the tractor apparently right up to it. And we've cut all the bark at the bottom of the tree and that nice tree's dead now. So again, who do we talk to? Is that the person we had come in last summer to cut grass? Is it a training issue? But that tree's dead and somebody should say, yeah, the tree's dead, we need to take it out and if you want to replace it, we need to replace it. Those are the things when we get down to, to responsibilities have to be defined. Because otherwise, we're just gonna be picking at each other and then, and this stuff isn't gonna get done. But my assumption is we're paying people to maintain the parks. Those things should come to somebody's attention. And I would expect to see it on RCA or live an explanation to the council. Sorry for the, well, we have to, we have to get that resolved as a council. So we work best together with the staff. Staff knows what's expected of them and can be held accountable. In this case, we have to tell Mr. Rodomacher what we're gonna do. And my concern is I don't, the longevity of the trees is unknown at this point. The letter, the information you sent out, Mary, on that says trees should be watered immediately after planting. Well, they got planted and nobody knew that they were even getting planted, let alone watered. They went out on Friday and we had all weekend with no water. So and as your article said, that can make the difference whether they make the year or not, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainbow.
Um, I believe in the initial documents, um, the trees were guaranteed for a year.
That's what it should be. If he paid the contractor, a nursery, right?
This current email, um, states that the subcontractor does however, accept full responsibility for any tree that does not remain plumb during the warranty period. And if the city believes guide wires are critical installation of the guide, guide wires would assist in getting the escrow returned, I will request they be installed during the next trip out. I, I don't wanna see the guide wires tied to the return of the escrow. I, I think guide wires, when I look at locations that have newly planted trees, there are guide wires. I've not, I've never planted a tree that didn't get guide wires.
Not this height.
Right. And there are ones that, when I was out there one day and it was windy, they were moving back and forth. So to me, that means they need to be staked. What I don't like and what I've heard is, well, they're guaranteed, and I don't refer to this letter, but I've heard from others, is that well, they're guaranteed for a year, so they'll have to come back. Well, why allow that tree to die or to go start to grow crooked? Why, why would you do that? Why not fix it now by placing the guy wires? And Mr. Rodomacher is stating that he can ask his contractor to go out and do that. But again, I think, I don't wanna tie that to the release of the escrow. I just think that's something that should have been done. And I do believe one of the other documents from Mr. Rodomacher said that that is left up to the contractor to decide whether guy wires are... Mr. Rodomacher said that that is left up to the contractor to decide whether guy wires are installed or not. But to me, if you go back there and you shake some of them, they're moving. To me, that's trouble down the road.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rayville.
I think the question comes down to who own, who, who's, not necessarily who owns the trees, but who's responsible for the trees from what I, from what I'm hearing. And if it's the, so it was the, the, um, Mr. Rodomacher who said, who had it on the plans that the trees go there and it was the contractor who put them in by mistake, is it the, I'm just thinking in general, I've never had, you know, um, trees commercially brought in. Is that something that the, the, the nursery would be responsible for making sure that they're going to make it through the year?
The, the question that we had is when, when we decided, we wanted to see where we wanted the trees, we wanted to see how it all laid out and where trees should be. We agreed that 15 trees would be $5,000. And there was a discussion on taking additional park funds and working with a nursery to put in the trees, the 15 replacements and potential additional trees once we saw where the headlights were coming on the ball field. The idea is it whether it be trees or a fence, you probably don't want truck headlights shining on an outfield of a, of a softball field. So that was the, the intention. If we had done that, if the, the council and/or the park committee had determined that, we would have likely gone to a, a nursery, either Rum River like they did, which, I don't know if they did or not, wherever they got theirs. We would have gone to an Alden Nursery and they would have been responsible to plant them and get them started right and work with the city on what do we need to do. And if they've done that right and they put them in properly and, and watered them initially, the expectation they would last at least a year. If they've lasted a year, there's a good chance they're going to keep going. So it would have been a collaborative thing with the nursery. We don't know who put these in, whether they bought them at a nursery where they typically do and put them in themselves. I don't, I wasn't here when they were put in. So I don't know if it was the contractor did it. I don't know if they contracted with the nursery to come down to it or the contractor just buys them, he designated a nursery and does it. But at that point, because we didn't know what was going in on a Friday, we didn't, we didn't get a good handoff on that. What do we need to do? So who owns it? It's real gray area because either the owner of bills or the city knew what was even going on.
Mr. Mayor.
My mistake.
Well, right now, yeah, it comes down to whether or not you accept them or not. If you don't, you're, you know, not your responsibility. They were put in by the contractor, Rum River Nursery. Um, but just generally speaking, of course, it takes the cooperation of, you know, the property owner to keep them alive for a year. Um, what was my other point? Uh, I guess that, that was related to this issue. I had a couple of comments on maintenance, but I won't start there. Uh, but the guy wires, you know, which is usually three of them, um, would go out into the grass. So then there, you know, there, there again, that's more trimming that needs to be done.
They did put, they did put wood chips around them.
Did they?
Oh, and when we're done here, I need you to go out and look at that manhole because everybody keeps telling me it's there. All I see is a big pool of water.
Oh, I'll hear where the manhole is supposed to be?
I keep calling Shane, he says, oh, yeah, so and so's been out there. See it on the plan? There, there's a manhole laying in the grass, but it's not attaching anything. But there's a big pool in this rain. There's, there's a huge puddle.
I'll take a picture of it. Hmm, okay.
All right, so anything else on this today? Obviously, we'll decide Tuesday, but I think 15 trees at $5,000 is what they had, about thirty, 330 bucks a piece or something like that?
Right around there, yeah.
Forty-nine fifty. So we could take that money, refund the rest, tell Joe, keep the trees alive. Any other options anybody wants to talk about?
Bags or soaker hose or sprinklers.
And obviously, this week hasn't been so critical with two inches of rain.
Sprinklers on our soaker hose on a timer. I don't know, that'd be a long hose.
How about the guy wires?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rayville.
I, I believe the guy wires need to be installed. Again, I, I don't like to see them tied to, um, an escrow refund. Um, that's a separate issue, but I, I do believe the guy wires need to be installed. Again, I, I don't want, want to think, well, if it goes bad in a year, we can get them replaced. So let them go, let, let, let the issue fester. I, I think that's poor, um, that's just not the right way to go. And then you've got trees that are a year apart as far as they're growing, um, as far as size and things like that. So, if you end up having
You okay with the species that we ended up with?
I, I, to be honest, I don't know enough about trees to, to say whether or not that was the right, um, species or whether a mixture of, of colors come, come the fall. Maybe it would have been pretty to have different colors as the leaves change in the fall. But, but I don't, that is not my expertise. And it's a shame we never had, we weren't able to have that conversation.
Yeah, I don't know what they are. I guess they must be whatever was shown on the plan.
Linden.
Oh, they're Lindens, okay.
The seven out here, Linden, deciduous, which I believe is another name for basswood.
It's a, yeah, it's a species of basswood, um.
Tend to be a soft tree, fast growing, but they break easily.
Yeah, I'd say moderately. They have a very nice shape.
Yeah, they've got a nice crown to them.
A nice heavy crown like a maple, so it is kind of a, you know, a screen if you want to call it that. They're dense, um, but.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rayville.
Ms. Stockman, so you, when you said, um, the nice shape and the crown, is that based on trimming or is that just?
No.
No, linen's got a natural shape. It's kind of a spade type shape.
Okay, yeah, it's kind of wide at the bottom and it has a gentle.
Okay.
It looks like a, a very big spade. They, they tend to be very uniform without a lot of pruning. And when they're, when they're in the open like this, when, when they get close together in woods, they tend to be, they, they tend to weed out at the bottom, a lot of shoots and tend to be fairly weak and, but in the open, they're a good looking tree. And, you know, and at, at this point, if the council decides we, we're willing to accept where they are, what they are, and I think it's then imperative that the council and/or the park committee decide what additional ones we want and use our own funds for that as we had originally planned on anyway. So if we're acceptable to this, I think then we determine what the 15th tree would be cost wise and settle up on that and get the guy wires in place. I think with the wood chip bases they've got around there, you can probably, if the wires need to be out further than that, bring the wood chips out a bit, so.
Okay.
And then separate issue totally is what to do with that oak tree that got killed. All right, anybody else tonight on that? Looks like we, if the council is willing to accept, accept the species of trees and the location where they're at, then we would consider refund of an escrow minus cost of 15th tree. And we would require the guy wires.
Mr. Mayor.
Council, or Planner Stockman.
Just one last comment is to respond to Mary's thoughts on color, um, it wouldn't be unreasonable to think you could do crabapple or something else that flowers, you know, in front of these, um, which would also be, you know, lesser cost to the city. They're a smaller tree, I mean, but just a thought anyway.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rayville.
The, the ornamental.
More ornamental type tree in front of the big ones would, that would be a kind of a pretty backdrop, you know?
I will, I will say that probably one of the best former farm fields that I've seen planted in trees is the Schmidt Power property just down the road. They have a very good mix of species planted appropriately spaced and they're turning into beautiful woods.
Where is that about?
It's a mile and an eighth down from 22 here.
Which side?
It's on the west side.
Okay.
So, I'm trying to think. It's two properties down from the, people have moved in from Otsego that, that bought that old envelope building.
Oh, uh-huh, okay, right there.
Two more properties down from there. And that's Brad Schmidt Power's place. It's right next to the Victorian farmhouse there.
Okay, oh.
But if you look at, look at what they did in the trees in that front yard, you know, they're, they're all spaced for maturity and they've done fabulous. I mean, it's going to be great forested front yard.
Yeah.
All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rayville.
With Ms. Stockman here, could we also move to the, um, under council items, letter A? Yeah. Mr. Mayor, I resubmitted based upon our discussion at the council meeting and they requesting that the, um, attorney, uh, work with the city planner to come up with some training for the P and Z members. The other changes under source of funding, I, I wanted to clarify, um, that there's a $30 per league member course fee with a maximum per course fee of 180. So for the two courses, um, it would be a total of 360. That was not very clear in my last RCA. We still had a balance of 450 in dues and subscriptions. The other thing that was, um, added after conversation is under the request for training, or request for council action is that, um, that the future members will be at, via YouTube and that, um, council strongly encourages council members and appropriate internal staff to complete the training and attend the September 25th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. As we were reminded, we cannot mandate something to a city council member, but we can strongly encourage it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rayville.
To councilmember Rayville's RCA, I would just, for my personal, uh, knowledge to participate in that, do we need to have, have something in there? Like theoretically, I could start on that now. I write, yes? Or would I, I guess me personally, I'm going if, if.
Does the city have to make arrangements with the league to authorize? People would need a password to get into the.
That. I, I believe you do need a password and that would be something Cory would provide.
And, and I guess I'm just wondering if, if it needs to be, because we're including, we're using the money for the, for the, for the training funds and that it would be $60 a person. If I, that I, I, I guess I'm trying to say, if it's okay for your motion, that it wouldn't hinder me to start this, start our funding now for me personally, if that, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't know if I'm saying it the right way.
Councilmember, councilmember Brian. It would be appropriate and, and, um, acceptable that you could start the, the two training sessions as soon as you wanted, once council's approved of this.
Yeah, okay, that's why I just didn't want it to.
As a maximum of, of 360, if more than six people take it, we quit paying at that point.
Right, well, 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 in theory, we'd hit it anyway. I just didn't want it to be, I didn't want it to come across that I would have to wait for the P and Z members to finish or start first, so.
Now, once council approves the funding, then as soon as people can get into it. My concern on the, the general fund, city, town attorney, civil attorney, we had a balance of 5576. We don't know what's going on next story yet with the detachment. I think those funds are going to get chewed up pretty quick because that's where the, the detachment attorney's getting paid for as well. And it's, there's a, a letter in process right now, so I know that he's been working on, so there's more billings going to come in on that, so I don't think those funds are going to be there. So we have to, we have to watch that portion of it. And then in addition, if we're asking Planner Stockman to participate in that, there will be some funds we'll need for that as well. So, so I think we need to look at, re, readdress the funding portion of it.
Hi, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rayville.
I, I did not ask Cory for an updated budget. Um, so I have the May 4th and I know that there are additional, so we would, if there isn't anything left in the civil attorney, maybe we would have.
He gave us one at 629. Did you get that in your box?
I did not have it at the time I submitted this. So it, it, maybe we could look at, um, the criminal attorney to see if there's any surplus there.
And we just did, we, we got a $10,000 donation.
I have something else. Thanks, but no thanks.
All right, so you're going to, you're going to readdress that, take that up before Tuesday?
Before Tuesday.
When I'm ready for Tuesday, then we'll move to August.
Mr. Mayor.
Did that come up at the planning and zoning at all?
No, we didn't talk about it there, but I did get a call from Bob just Tuesday. We talked about it and I think he's got, he's got some PowerPoints already that have some of this in there and that he was going to provide those to me to look at, to see what ideas I had to add or subtract from them, to them or from them.
All right, anything else on, on Haida May and the council night?
Was there something specific that Mary wanted Cory to look into before the council of the funding?
I will contact Cory in regards to budgeting.
It's just where, where we're at with the expenditures to date and where this money might come from. And I said, we, we've got an update as of 629, so that's probably fairly accurate.
Training.
Yeah, to pay for the attorney to come in and for Planner Stockman to participate in the September P and Z training.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rayville.
So when you're saying the 629 is what was in our packet?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I thought, wanted to make sure there wasn't something different than this. Okay. No, I'm not, yeah. Which is for the budget conversation, all right.
Let's go back up to Roden Bridge RCA.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Brian.
This came up. This came up a couple of times in the last few Roden Bridges, about just clarifying council direction of what, what we can and can't do to prepare RCA's coming out of Roden Bridge and gathering information. And as I understand it, we've, we've said, you know, if, if we need to gather information so that the committees can be efficient and make decisions, so that information can be presented to the council, that, that's acceptable to do. And if it would require getting more information about cost and such, that that would be part of preparing that information. That didn't seem to necessarily be how that was, how the council direction was understood, so I, I said that I would put in an RCA, just so that we would bring it up and talk about it. And since I put it in there, I was just thinking, if that was, basically, the council's intent was, if you need to get information and, so that you can have a useful discussion at Roden Bridge, then by all means, go ahead and do that, and that we wouldn't necessarily need to move forward with a motion on Tuesday for this. There are seven projects right now that we're trying to get some pricing information on, so we can use that information to prioritize some road repair, culvert repairs, and ditch work for, for the remainder of this year.
It was very frustrating listening to that discussion at Roden Bridge. We've devolved to a point where we can't function anymore, because everybody's waiting for either covering or protection, or, but then nobody says they're waiting for this. So the Roden Bridge, two months ago, said, "We need this information." It's recorded and disseminated, and then a month later, nothing's happened, because we don't have authorization to do that. It's true, we don't want committee members running around willy-nilly, asking everybody for everything. There's got to be a controlled process, because if, if every committee has, the committee members running out and asking questions of various contractors, it's going to be a mess. Somewhere, again, this goes back to discussion we had before, we need to make it clear to staff, who's supposed to do what, what they're authorized to do. We're not asking to spend money, other than staff time, to get information. We're not asking for hard firm quotes, we're saying, "What is it approximately going to cost?", so that the Roden Bridge, or whatever committee, can prioritize the recommendations to the council. Right now, nothing's coming to us, because everybody's frozen on who's doing what. Roden Bridge doesn't have any recommendations, because they don't know what the costs are. Nobody knows who's going out and looking at which roads are worse. And, and again, it's up to the council to define to the staff what we expect on a high level, and what they're authorized to do on their own. They can't make commitments for the city, but they can ask questions. And if there's a need for clarification, then again, the proactive nature of this would be, "I want to go out and get these quotes on these roads, so I can get the information back to Roden Bridge." If you're unclear about that, then ask. That's the frustration, is we're not being asked, and then we're saying nothing can happen, because we weren't authorized. We didn't know you needed authorization. You know, I signed $137,000 in bills last month, what do we got this month? Somebody spent all that without asking for permission. We've been functioning at $100,000 in expenditures every month for years, I don't know why this has suddenly become an issue. Because we're not even asking about spending money, we're simply getting information, so we know where we want to spend, where we should be spending money. So if, if it's actual confusion, we need to clear it up as a council. If it's something other than that, we also need to clear that up as a council. So your question as to, can staff go out and, and gather information to provide working details, so the committee can make recommendations? I would say yes.
And, and I would agree with that, yeah, I mean, that should be part of the...
You know, if that's not clearly understood, then we need a question from staff, saying, "What isn't understood?", because in the past, it's happened. Now, if we're going to argue that, well, you questioned dust control, or gravel bill, or whoever it is, yeah, because now you're making a recommendation to actually spend the money. You're not doing research. If you came back and said, "Here's five different riders of dust control, and here's a recommendation I have," it's a whole different thing. If you're going to go out and start letting contracts, yeah, council likes, likes to know where the money's going. But if you're gathering information, so we can make good decisions, that's what staff's supposed to do, in my opinion.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rayville.
And I, and I agree, at, at the, at the meeting, it was a hard conversation to listen to, and I think there's some confusion based on, it was a February meeting, when the attorney talked to us about authorization of expenditure of funds, and that even though it's in, I think the question was asked, e- even if it's in the budget, do they still have the ability to spend that money? And the attorney's response was, "No, you still have to give specific direction to save." Council authorizes staff to spend $4,000 on ABC. And without that specific authorization, there isn't the ability for staff to, to expend funds. We did have some conversation as to how we were going to match our policies with that. There was some initial information provided by the attorney, and there were some recommendations by council as to what a dollar amount would be to be acceptable for being able to spend without receiving permission. We've not moved forward with that. So at this point, it's the way it's always been, and as the way it's always been, requesting quotes is not an expenditure of funds. So there was never any change to that part of any policy. There was never a change to any policy, and even if there had been, getting quotes was not part of that discussion. And it's, it is a shame, because now we're three months later in that process of getting information in regards to, that's necessary for Roden Bridge to look at, costs associated with road projects.
Other questions on that?
So, so just to be clear, then, it doesn't appear that there needs to be any motion or discussion continued about this specific issue on Tuesday? And just clarifying, and I have no problem having a conversation with Joe, that let's go ahead and, it's the council's under the impression that, that work can, can continue on, to gather the information, so we can have the discussion about what projects we're going to work on at the next Roden Bridge meeting?
Yeah, I, yeah, I see it as, we had the 350 had a problem, and there's a quest to get it fixed. Well, what's the problem? Don't know. Nobody's looked at it yet. How can you authorize getting it fixed, if you don't know what it's going to cost? Has it got to be a module replaced, or an engine replaced? You know, so first thing you have to do is take it to be evaluated, and that's where you, you assume that, take that first step and come back, say, "Okay, I've had three people look at it, and they all say the same thing, it's a $600 repair." Or it's a $6,000 repair, or it's $60,000, we're going to junk the thing. Come back with the information, but typically, that's what's done, and I don't know why this has changed. Now, before you go and spend that 600, or 6,000, or 60,000, you come back and say, "Does it make sense to put that kind of money into this vehicle?" Same thing on a road. The estimates I've got on this thing, from, from reliable sources, are this much money. Does it make sense to put that into the road? But before you, you, you go out and, and let that bid out, you get the authorization. And so collecting information is staff's responsibility, spending money, they get authorization. I think that's clear. If you want to pull your RCA, and...
If, if that's, if that's basically the working, workings, and I guess we call it council, council direction, and that, that hasn't really changed, that there's no need for a motion, then I would say, then yes, let's go ahead and pull it from...
Councilmember Rayville?
Mr. Mayor, I, I would suggest leaving it in the packet.
Okay.
Then the entire council can have the discussion, and the entire council can re, either reaffirm, or a portion of us reaffirm, that this is how we were doing it, this is how we would continue to do it, so that there's hopefully uniformality by the council, as to saying, quotes are quotes, please continue to get them as you have in the past, nothing has changed there.
Works for me.
Down to the consent agenda. We've got workshop, council meeting minutes, and council plan meeting minutes. So Ellen, do you know, on the treasures report, do you work with us?
This is the first one I have.
Okay.
I'll try to answer.
So, the greater debt service, item three underneath that last yellow line? Last payment, 8-1, 2021, is that our, the 3,400, is that our annual payment, is that?
I think that's the balances. I think this last column is the balances of those funds.
It can't be a balance, and we're, we're still three years out.
I didn't, I didn't do a lot with the bottom parts.
Okay, so we need to ask that, because I'm looking at the claims history on page one of three, and claim 823, we have a $1,658 payment, and we have a $26,000 payment.
Okay, I do know that difference.
So we, we paid a principal payment of $26,000, and an interest payment of 1,658. So if you look on one of three, the last item on page one... All right, so the 1,658 is, is interest, and the 26,000 is principal. So I'm trying to connect 3,400 on here, the greater debt service, and 27,658.
I can explain.
Okay.
This was the only one that had the principal amount on it, that's due at this month. The Community Pride Bank only, was the only one with the principal amount, all the other bonds only had interest. That explain it?
Well, what, what is, what is the 3,400 on this treasures report? Because my understanding is this is for the greater bond. So the greater debt service is 3,406, and yet we just paid 27,000. I'm not going to ask you to explain it here, but on Monday, if you could, could talk with Corey and say, "So what is, what is this 3,400, and how does it relate to this? And are we paying $26,000 plus interest every year for the next three years? So how much do we still owe on that greater?" So then, if, if you could, does anybody know where we would find the fire engine, remaining balance on the fire engine, the greater, and the maintenance building? So, yeah, if you could find out what the balance due is on the rest of those, and what our annual principal and interest payments are?
For the top four bonds, right?
Yeah, yeah. The solt is next year, and we're, we're in the negative there because of interest issues, so we're going to have to...
What the balance due is for the top four bonds, and...
What, what our annual principal and interest payments are, and when they're... I thought all of them had principal in August, but some of them might be principal earlier in the year.
Is this like a, a monthly amount that you think we're paying?
I, I don't have any idea.
We don't pay the monthly, annual.
No, you, you pay interest twice a year, and you pay principal once a year, is my recollection.
But I think these numbers have been, I'm trying to think, if these numbers have been pretty much the same month after month?
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out why.
Like it's money that it's going into a place, and then it's being paid as it's needed? I guess that's, I think, trying to, I think that's kind of the question.
So she's assuming that if you divide our interest and our principal by 12, this is what we, we set aside monthly?
Right.
And then, once a year, we pay this? That's, I just want to confirm that, because we're putting aside $20,000 a month for the refunding of the maintenance building, you know? I just clarified, because... All right? And then my question on claim 818, fire, parks vandalism, farmers' market, elections, training, a lot of things on that one. Parks area, operating supplies, do you see it there? We're on page, page one still, right in the middle of the page.
I know what the parks vandalism was, and it was the trash cans, those were like almost $3,000.
Right, so, did we get that, we have a $1,000 deductible? Okay, I want to check on that, because there should be a $1,000 deductible, and I would assume this would be paid by insurance.
I think it's still in process, the insurance claiming is not coming, we haven't finished that whole thing yet. The farmer's market was a trailer hitch or something?
Yeah, my, my concern, the, the smaller ones, I'm not, you know, they pay for pencil and sharpeners for 20 bucks for that, for elections, eh, it's going to break us. But my, my concern is that when we get that $3,000, or $2,000 minus the deductible, I just want to make sure that that's tracked back into this, because we're paying this out, obviously, now, waiting for the insurance to settle, if that's what we're doing, so... How was the conference, by the way?
Great.
You ready to give a report on Tuesday?
I'm ready.
That planning company, holy schmoly. About two months?
Yeah.
How did you eat last night?
Well, my husb, husband does work a little. I just work 60 hours a week.
Anybody else got any questions on the... Burns Town Sanity, guys can see that we closed a net property, there's construction going on, we're working with neighbors on a fence.
Neighbors?
To the property we just sold.
Well, I looked back in the, the approval for the concrete business, and it was just requiring it across the front. So I spoke with Mr., can't think of the new guy's name, Justin, Justin, forget his last name. Anyway, he said, I suggested they work together to kind of come up with some screening. He said, no, I'm good, we're gonna plant a lot of trees. And he said he didn't want to look out the window into the storage yard, and he's gonna plant his own trees, so. But we didn't require anything besides across that front there, so it wasn't supposed to turn...
We live and learn, because it sure looks rough from two hundred and forty.
I agree.
One point three, election judges.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Raydell?
Would it be the second one point three?
Oh, yeah.
One point three B.
Three B. Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Raydell?
In looking at these names, I would like to pull one from the list of candidates to be election judge, and that is the name of Dan Williams, Daniel Williams. I just, based on Mr. Williams' previous behaviors, I don't believe that he reflects positively on the city, and I would prefer that he not be an election judge. I'm not saying that he is not qualified, he has done it for many years, and appreciate that, but based on his verbal comments at meetings, I just do not believe that he is, reflects a positive image on our city, and would ask that his name be removed from consideration.
Helen, do you know, with your now holding the position in the office, how are they designating head judges? Is there one primary election judge? Are there precinct? How is that structured?
Each precinct has a head judge and assistant judge, an assistant head judge, and then there are election judges under them.
Okay, so you were precinct two?
I was head judge for precinct two.
All right. So do, do we know who's designated as head and?
Judy Haraway is the head judge for precinct twenty, and her assistant head judge is Stephanie Lekas, Lekas. And Penny O'Plante is now the head judge for two A, and her assistant head judge is, let's see the name of her here, Lori Welb...
Jonathan.
Welbroke.
I think it's Welbroke.
No. Welbroke, I think it is. I can't remember what else. I'm looking at my phone. She did it for the first time last year, and had a previous head judge experience, and did a good job.
We should probably have her on the list, though, if I can...
Yeah, we can add them until the twentieth, so that's not a complete failure, but I don't know why she wouldn't be on there. I would take responsibility for that, because that was me putting that together.
Do you know on this list, is there a balance, P one and precinct one and two?
Yes. Lori Welber, I think, Welber.
How do you spell Lori?
W E L L B E R G.
W E L L? I have the comments on election judges.
So is that, so it's an even number across precinct?
There are twenty-three judges, including the head judges and assistant head judges, so it's fairly even. And I, one A is a larger precinct, so they generally have a few more than two A.
Twenty-four with Lori.
Right, you'd have twenty-four with Lori, I guess that's where I'm...
Let me look back and see if I can see if that cross out, if that was supposed to... I'll have to look back, it looks like all of these are...
Did you confirm that for us, or just now an email, please? Not a problem, yet. Before we leave, I need to talk about that one, too, we got a tape on that.
Is that the same, so it's the same number of judges over the, between years past, even with the...
No, it's actually reduced quite a few, because there's quite a few that did not want to do it this year.
Okay. And you can function with that number, in your experience as former head judge?
Only because they have this, the poll pads are now electronic, and so they don't have to, one of the registration tables is being removed and all the new registrations, and the already registered, registered voters all watch at the same table, so it reduces the need for two judges, actually, in each precinct, so it's hopefully streamlined and everything, and it's quite impressive how this is going to, kind of exciting to see how it comes together this year.
It's very Mission Impossible-esque with the crates.
Mr. Mayor?
The problem is with those new, those new poll pads, the instructions come in Russian.
Better than Chinese.
Get all these judges in the office to train them on it before they like wing it, so...
Councilmember Raydell?
I would also think as far as the number of judges, that the early voting helps the number, keep, keep, is, makes for a lesser number of voters on that day.
I feel like, I feel generally...
Generally, it's more so...
Yeah, the bigger issue aligns out the office door, so people don't have to stand on land election day. All right. Old one point four. Resolution accepting a ten thousand dollar donation from the Ramsey Lions Clubs.
Mr. Mayor?
And that's a use as you will donation, correct?
Yes.
Councilmember Raydell?
In a conversation with, with our city clerk, Cory Leducer, yes, this was a use as we wish, there was no stipulations on it, I would like to ask council's consideration to use that money for repairs, improvements to City Hall. We spoke about that last year, we didn't move forward with it, because where's the money coming from? I would like to see us use that money for this purpose. It allows us to see on a continual basis how the monies were used, and I think that's a benefit as far as using donated funds to something that's done visible to us.
So we do have a category. So what you're saying is you would like that put into the building capital improvement account, so we know where that went?
Yes.
And then we have to do something with that capital improvement account, to clean this place up.
Yes.
All right.
And in addition, there's also some funds that the Now Then Lions are holding that were associated with the mayor's participation in the previous mayor's snowmobile rides, and I want to say that's between seven and eight hundred dollars.
All right. And then one point five, five thousand dollars to the fire equipment fund. Any concern over that? Nope, they're in their new nozzle. And we have an RCA for closing the road. Hasn't been cleaned up yet? Did Troy do this, or did the office do this for him, do you know?
Question about the date?
Well, the date's wrong, and what portion of the street's being closed off?
It was back to our attention after Cory was gone, and so it hasn't changed yet, but she'll be back on the map.
So road closure one ninety-ninth, do we go on to end of Iguana going north? Do the, again, we went through this last year. People that want to get into the expanded storage facility, is, is, is the new owner there, do we have access to the buildings, the garage and other buildings on that road? Cory wrote this for him, or if he wrote it, we need to get that cleaned up, that the other businesses that would be closed off for those six hours.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Bryan?
Trying to remember, I think last year there was, for clarification, that there was some, at least people could get in, but it was only going to be like one way, if I remember right?
Yeah, I believe we kept one side of the road open, the cars were parked against the, the other side of the road. I don't know what other businesses, the golf carts are transporting people to and from, maybe other businesses are having activities those days as well. But I guess I, I would like to know when they clean this up, what other businesses? Because if it's simply running people from the heritage festival back to the car show versus are they going up and down the rest of Iguana that isn't closed off? If they're running to the bars or to the nursery or something, that'd be a little different, because then you run golf carts on streets as opposed to running across a field. So what other businesses are they running the golf carts back and forth from?
Okay, that's what you're asking?
Yep.
What other business was, were the golf...
Says the use of golf carts to help commute people from other business and community events inside the business district of Now Then.
So what other businesses would that golf carts be servicing?
Yeah. Are they, are they going just to people next door, or are they going down to bars and, you know, because if they're going down to Northwoods and the facilities down here, bootleggers and bills and stuff like that, it's a little different going on Iguana with traffic on it, and through parking lots down there with traffic, as opposed to just sitting across the street and coming across to the heritage festivals.
So just to clarify, there's a difference to Cory, maybe clean up the date discrepancy and name the specific roads that will be closed, and what other businesses would golf carts be servicing as the road is closed off?
And how do the, how do the people on the road closure from, I'm assuming one hundred ninety-ninth to two hundred first, how do those people get in and out of their businesses if the roads are closed? Last year, I think we closed half the road, but we need to clarify that. And I didn't pull out last year's council actions. And then if, if staff is doing that for Mr. Ben Nars, just, I would say submitted by whoever on staff for. So it's, it's clear that, it says it's submitted by Troy?
I believe it was, I don't remember.
But I'm just saying if it isn't, that, you know, if it is, that's fine, if it isn't, if somebody else does it for him, just say on behalf of Mr. Ben Nars. I would guess it would, too, because Cory would, I think, be a little more thorough than that. All right, budget meetings, council items C. Anybody?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Raydell?
I would suggest we wait until the council member, Rickard and Bettenger are here, because I don't see any benefit in picking dates if they're not available.
I just say, just if you know which ones aren't available for this group. RCA for employment and personnel policy comments.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Raydell?
Two staff members did supply comments. I'm not aware of any comments by either of the other two staff or the, the three staff or the council members. I would suggest that we go through this tomorrow, or on Tuesday, we can answer the questions, I will have questions, responses to the questions provided by city employees, which will be sufficient.
Yeah, I'm not sure if we're gonna be able to get through all of it on Tuesday.
Well, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Raydell?
Council and staff were to have their suggestions so that they were in the packet. I would think if we can sufficiently answer the questions that are presented by staff, I guess I, I'm going to go out on a limb and assume that council is, approves what is there, if we've not received anything that tells me different from other council members or staff.
Seems fair. Seems fair, you asked for feedback, a lack of feedback is feedback. It's assumed approval.
Yeah, I, I had originally asked for the month prior, so that would have been back in June, I had a council member who requested an additional month, they, I amended my motion, we went through that additional month, and there's been no response.
All right. And it looks like lastly, training plan and job descriptions, part of the packet. Say at this point, are you expecting actions on that, or are you expecting the council to take the information we just got and evaluate it?
Well, Mr. Mayor, this letter D under council items is, was not my motion, that was the motion. Councilmember Rickard asked that it be on the agenda, there was no RCA stating what was to be discussed, what the action would be, but during the meeting then, it was... But during the meeting, then, it was determined that we would have, Cory would provide the training plan and updated job descriptions for council's review. And if I remember correctly, then the next thing was for council to, to provide their input as to what they, how they feel.
Anything else?
Mr. Mayor, I'm looking at a jury.
Second, looking at a jury.